To see the student athletes in the board meeting tonight, and the audience, and their parents, welcome. We're so glad you're here. Congratulations on your performance, and we're looking forward to having you be a part of this meeting tonight. The highlight of the meeting, no question about it. We'll get through all this other items of business, but seeing your faces and having you here with us tonight is the best part of the day so far, no question about it. We'll begin with the pledge allegiance, and I'll ask Board Member Blues...
Yep.
Who's moved?
I know, right?
On your left now, bro.
Yeah, right there. You used to sit where Cory is. Why don't you lead us in the pledge time?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We just came from a study session, and we are grateful for all the individuals that helped us get to this point. Always for the district administration and for Stacy and John. We wouldn't be able to, Brooke, we wouldn't be able to do this without your help, so we're grateful for everybody that supports the board. We'll begin with the celebration. I think let's do that. So we're gonna invite Coach Dishar to come up, or are we gonna call, invite, who are we inviting now?
Let's invite Principal Kelly to come up and introduce Coach Dishar. Come on up, Coach Dishar. Come with your principal there.
Always good to see the bleached heads.
There we go.
And then let's...
I look like one of the kids.
Right, that's who it was.
Principal Kelly, let's start with the kids, then we'll kind of follow up at the end with our other announcement.
Okay.
Coach, have you done that every year? Bleach your head? First year?
No. I did it probably about six years ago, to the, you know, the little goals that were out there, but in these guys, "Should bleach your hair?" Said, "No." I showed up the next time in practice, and, but the deal was, everybody had to do it then.
So did they?
One of our kids. That's no big deal. It was fun, though. One last chance.
Well, thanks for being here, you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to this celebration. Let's get going.
Well, first, we want to congratulate Coach Dishar, but also the boys for wrestling really well at state. They peaked. We had three state champions, and Wade, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had five other places, right?
Sounds right.
But wrestled really well and represented Wasatch High.
Oh, yeah, Tentile.
Tentile. Represented Wasatch High very well. We were well represented by the community and by these boys, and they're not only good kids and good wrestlers, but they're good kids in the classroom, and they go to class, and that's what we want to celebrate as student athletes. It takes a lot of hard work and dedication. They miss school from time to time, but they're always there making it up. Wade does a great job of having the kids every Monday come and get their homework done and get caught up, because we know that the education is the most important thing. And wrestling is very important, but it lasts a small amount of time. It's that hard work and dedication. So, boys, thank you for representing Wasatch High very well and having a great season. Thank you.
Coach Dishar, do you want to introduce our state champions for the board and maybe have them come up, and maybe the board might want to hear a quick word from them or ask them a question or two?
You bet. So, our state champions, we'll go with Austin Kelly, Ryder Robinson, and Hank Hanson. These boys, if you guys had a chance to watch it at all, it was inspiring wrestling. It was just wonderful. So, go ahead. This is Ryder.
What's up? Do you want me to introduce myself?
Yeah, introduce yourself. Tell us what grade you are in school.
I'm a senior. My name is Ryder Robinson. I'm a two-time state champ now, and I got outstanding wrestler at the state tournament.
Excellent. What weight, what weight did you wrestle?
And I'm going to college in Oregon at Clarkhames Community College.
You plan to wrestle there?
Yeah.
What do you want to study, though? What do you want to be when you grow up?
Wrestling. Junior college. He's got a little time to figure it out.
Congratulations, Ryder.
I'm Austin Kelly, senior, 138, state champ. Thirty-two, sorry. Hi, I'm also going to West Wyoming Community College in Rock Springs this fall, so.
What are you gonna go to school for?
Yeah.
Oh, construction management.
So, Mr. Kelly, maybe the other two champs can be thinking about this as well. I'd like to know, in your journey, and, you know, I've had a front row seat to watch these boys over the years, and in your journey to become a state champion and all the work that you put in and the goals you set, and the Saturdays you were chasing every little podunk freestyle and big tournament that you could. What has wrestling, what has this journey taught you beyond how to be a state champion wrestler?
Definitely to work hard and to push through everything. I mean, practice sucks. Four hours every day, every day. Having Dishar right up your ear, it's awful, but it's worth it, every second of it, because it teaches you not even to be a good wrestler, but just at the end of the day to be a better man, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm Hank Hanson. I'm a junior. This is my first time winning state, and, yeah, that's kind of it. Do you want me to answer that question you asked?
I'd love you to, Hank. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. I think wrestling has taught me so much perseverance through kind of the knee surgeries I've had and kind of the difficulties that came with that, was like kind of discouraging, and then going into the season and then not placing at state sophomore year, and then trying to work hard and keep going and not seeing a bunch of stuff happen. But then everything seemed to click towards the state tournament, and that was just a huge blessing and really a fun treat.
So Hank, if you don't recall, maybe your coaches can help you, but what were you seated going into the state tournament?
Going into state or divisionals? Divisionals, I wasn't seated.
Okay. Was not seated at divisional?
Yes.
So, let me just take it from there for a minute, and then maybe you can respond. So, when Principal Kelly talked about how the wrestlers overperformed and did an awesome job at state, Hank would be the shining example of that, walking into the divisional tournament two weeks prior or one week prior to state, not ranked and ending up a state champion. What changed for you? What got you over the hump? That's a remarkable performance, and just, we're all so proud of you, but tell us a little bit about that.
Well, you're kind to say that. I think it was mainly my mindset, kind of, I was able to figure out how to go into matches, into matches that I thought I had. So, that was really a kind of a big change and a big shift. I was able to go on the mat just with a smile and appreciate the sport for what it was, and just have fun with it, and that's kind of what clicked and what helped me just be relaxed and have fun. If I put too much pressure on myself or kind of psych myself out, it just doesn't go well, and so I think that was one of the bigger things. I can't take all the credit, because I've been wrestling at a different weight the whole year, and so coming into it, I hadn't wrestled many tournaments at 150, so that could have contributed to seating, but, yeah, I don't know.
It's a great performance. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I got something to say today. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I don't know you. I don't have kids in school anymore, so I've kind of lost touch with all that, but my wife and I were listening to the broadcast, and probably all of you wrestlers did an interview, but we heard your interview. Don't laugh. When you got done, my wife said, "Man, what an impressive young man." So, Mom, you're doing a good job.
She is doing an amazing job, Mr. Holmes.
And Coach, you didn't screw it up. But she was really impressed. What's that?
I'm not going to either.
Okay. But really impressive, and she said, "What a fine young man," and wrestling may not take you everywhere you want, but I know the skills you learned and your personality and how you conduct yourself will, so very impressed with you.
Thank you so much.
Ryder, would you like to answer the question, what wrestling's taught you as well, buddy? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Wrestling's taught me a lot about what I need to know about life. When you're down at practice and when you're down at tournaments, you just gotta kind of just push through it and do everything you can to perform your best and perform as well as you can, if you possibly can.
Excellent. We not only have three studs on the mat here, we have three very well-spoken young men. Thank you, all of you. I think we'd like to have our champs come up here for a picture, and we'd also like to have every member of the wrestling team that's here to come up, and let's get a picture of all of you with the board, and I think President...
I got one, before you come up, I got one more question. I need Coach Dishar to come to the podium for a second. Coach, yeah. Coach, you're a legend. I don't know you that well personally. We've crossed paths a couple of times. I've probably had more interactions with your wife than you, but I will say that whenever we refer to coaches in the district and across the state, your name comes to the conversation. And what we're looking for in new coaches and what we're looking for in leader of students to, so they can become men, and your tenure is coming to an end, and I imagine there's going to be a lot of fanfare and there'll be a lot of celebration as a coach here in this district, but I'm curious, just from a personal standpoint, what you've learned across your journey.
Oh, wow. What have I learned? Actually, I've been in a lot of reflection over the last, it's been actually the last year or so, when I've kind of made the decision to, you know, this is probably going to be my last year. You know, you really try to soak in every moment as a coach, and those relationships you have with kids and you have with the people around you, and, you know, I guess if I look at what has transpired, it's the people around you that really make things valuable, right? I mean, I look at this board here. Keith and I have the opportunity to leave at the same time. Now, I'm just, you know, Mr. Sweat, I look back here, these are all people that have been through, along with me through this journey, and these things wouldn't have happened. I have a tough time sometimes. Believe it or not, this face doesn't show it, but I get a little verklempt from time to time, but I, you know, I look at Justin Kelly here, who was, you know, 20 years ago was there. Mr. Sweat brought me back. He was there with the beginning. Yeah, it's just the people that make it all happen. Don't take them for granted. They're special, every one of them.
So...
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You know, this is a, by the way, Coach Dishar was named the outstanding wrestling coach for the year at the state tournament as well. Very, very appropriate award, and I'm sure that you've won a few of those, but this is the end of an era, and I think wrestling is going to go on. This community values wrestling, and wrestling's going to go on and do well, and we're going to find the next great coach. But I'll tell you what, this is a big, this is going to leave a big hole. Coach Wade Dishar has left his mark on this community and on so many young men, and he's had an influence on my family and specifically three of my boys that have wrestled for him over the years, and we owe this man as Wasatch County and Wasatch County School District. This is as good as it gets when it comes to a high school coach, and Wade Dishar, you'll find him at the state tournament coaching somebody to their third or fourth or their second state championship one day, and the next Saturday, you might find him in some little podunk gym with bad ventilation on his knees helping a fifth grader learn how to wrestle. And that's what's made him great. He cares about these kids at every level, and it's not hard to see where success comes from. Success comes from those that put in the work, and all these boys put in the work because they're only following the example of their head coach, and we're glad you're sticking around, and we appreciate the influence you have as a teacher, but we're going to miss you as a coach, and we have, we're deeply indebted to you. Thank you for a lifetime of coaching here at Wasatch County School District.
Thank you.
Oh, wow. What have I learned? Actually, I've been in a lot of reflection over the last, it's been actually the last year or so, when I've kind of made the decision to, you know, this is probably going to be my last year. You know, you really try to soak in every moment as a coach, and those relationships you have with kids and you have with the people around you, and, you know, I guess if I look at what has transpired, it's the people around you that really make things valuable, right? I mean, I look at this board here. Keith and I have the opportunity to leave at the same time. Now, I'm just, you know, Mr. Sweat, I look back here, these are all people that have been through, along with me through this journey, and these things wouldn't have happened. I have a tough time sometimes. Believe it or not, this face doesn't show it, but I get a little verklempt from time to time, but I, you know, I look at Justin Kelly here, who was, you know, 20 years ago was there. Mr. Sweat brought me back. He was there with the beginning. Yeah, it's just the people that make it all happen. Don't take them for granted. They're special, every one of them. So...
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You know, this is a, by the way, Coach Dishar was named the outstanding wrestling coach for the year at the state tournament as well. Very, very appropriate award, and I'm sure that you've won a few of those, but this is the end of an era, and I think wrestling is going to go on. This community values wrestling, and wrestling's going to go on and do well, and we're going to find the next great coach. But I'll tell you what, this is a big, this is going to leave a big hole. Coach Wade Dishar has left his mark on this community and on so many young men, and he's had an influence on my family and specifically three of my boys that have wrestled for him over the years, and we owe this man as Wasatch County and Wasatch County School District. This is as good as it gets when it comes to a high school coach, and Wade Dishar, you'll find him at the state tournament coaching somebody to their third or fourth or their second state championship one day, and the next Saturday, you might find him in some little podunk gym with bad ventilation on his knees helping a fifth grader learn how to wrestle. And that's what's made him great. He cares about these kids at every level, and it's not hard to see where success comes from. Success comes from those that put in the work, and all these boys put in the work because they're only following the example of their head coach, and we're glad you're sticking around, and we appreciate the influence you have as a teacher, but we're going to miss you as a coach, and we have, we're deeply indebted to you. Thank you for a lifetime of coaching here at Wasatch County School District.
Thank you.
Before we call the team up, I just want to say a couple words, and then we're gonna, I'm not going to add to anything, but I've had the unique opportunity to work with Wade as his assistant, but I also had the awesome opportunity to work with his wife. She was my assistant at Rocky Mountain. And behind every good coach and good man is a good wife and a good supporter and a good female, and so I think a lot of the things that you guys see Wade doing out in the community is because his wife tells him to get his eyebrows up. But I think Stephanie is just as vital, as important to the success of Wasatch wrestling as Wade Dishar.
Let's take a picture.
I think, as Tom mentioned, at the district here, Wade's known as Stephanie Dishar's husband.
Yeah, it's true. It is true.
Come on, boys. You're every part of this state championship.
Okay.
All right, everybody in.
Violet. Violet in the back, short in the front. If you're... We can move the table back. We just slid it back. Something back in. You can slide in back here if someone... If you can't see me, I can't see you. As long as you can see me, we'll be good. Okay. Oh, that looks awesome, kid. Okay, guys. Right up here? That's awesome. Congratulations. Thank you. Welcome to stay. Yeah. Stay for the rest. All right, we're going to excuse the wrestling team and their family. You guys are welcome to stay, but as Cory said, you'll probably leave. Thank you for coming. You're always welcome.
No offense, guys.
Why don't we take, we'll take a couple of minutes. We'll take a couple of minutes, and then we'll jump back in. Want to say goodbye to some people? Said goodbye to the Wasatch wrestling squad. Good-looking boys there. Glad that they were able to come tonight. Okay, so the next item of business. All right. Very good. So, the board has had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks to do something that this board has never done before, and boards before us haven't done in a lot of years. Twenty-eight, to be exact. We've had to interview and go through the process of hiring Keith Johansson's replacement as the business administrator. And let me tell you a little bit about the process. We've had numerous applications that came in through Richard Stoll at the state office, and then we had the chance to interview multiple candidates. And the Board of Education has two responsibilities, and one of them is to hire the superintendent, and the other is the business administrator. And everything else, we leave up to the superintendent and their principals to do the hiring. Even though we'd like to hire maybe some of our children's coaches, we don't. We actually are far removed from, over the years, the board has become less and less involved in the hires within the buildings and the facilities of our schools. It's true. So, the only two hires that we have to have a responsibility over is the superintendent and the business administrator. So, we take this very seriously, and no one on this board has had the chance to hire either of these roles, and so it was new for us, and we took it, like I said, we took it not only seriously, but we knew the stewardship for the future of the district. It was at play here in replacing Keith. And let me just say something about Keith, and Keith will have his fanfare, too. He's not dying, and he's not going away, at least until September, so there'll be plenty of opportunities to have a party for Keith. I'll just say, as the president, we've made some... I'll just say, as the president, we've made some tough decisions. And we've made some decisions that have been very difficult, not only for our personal lives, but for the reputation of the district. And we've had to stand up and stand behind those decisions. And every single one of them, we had the moment where we would turn to Keith and say, "Are we gonna be okay?" And if Keith said no, we didn't make those decisions. And the community will never know what we were going to do or how we planned to do it. But anything that this board has done and previous boards have done, we've had the confidence of moving forward with that courage because of Keith. In his integrity, in his judgment, in his skills, in his talent, in his experience. And so, big shoes to fill. Big shoes to fill, no question about it. But we did fill them. And it's my pleasure to announce that the new business administrator is Jason Watt. Get comfortable there, Jason, 'cause we're gonna tell a couple of stories about you. So Jason, throughout the interview process, did something that no other candidate was able to do. And what he was able to do was live the process over the last 25 years. And I've always said, "You interview for your next role every day." Whether you're in a corporation, or whether you're in a district, or whether you're in a business. Whatever you can display and whatever kind of answers you can come up with in 45 minutes, plus one interview, plus two interviews, plus how many interviews somebody wants to give you, will never be the resume that you build over a lifetime of getting up and going to work and being consistent day in and day out. And the definition of consistency, reliability, dependability is Jason Watt in your career of Wasatch County School District over two decades. And I'll let the other board members share their reactions to your candidacy and the interviews. But I'll just say, Jason, that it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I'm so excited that you're gonna be on our team as a member of the board and help us with those decisions that Keith has helped us with. And so goes the seven of us. So goes the board. And we stay together and we make decisions that are united, and I think that's what makes us strong. And if I were to be in the schoolyard and pick, I'd pick you. And I'd pick you 10 out of 10 times. So thank you for applying and thank you for winning that job in everything that you've done and continue to do. So, appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Any other comments about the process?
I mean... I just, you know, told him earlier, we've been through a lot lately and we've got a lot coming up. And I don't think there's a better guy to help take us to this next step that we're planning and looking forward to than you, Jase. So we're excited.
I think this isn't just hiring, this isn't just about hiring Jason Watt. This is about who he is and what he brings and what he's going to bring. And, you know, Tom mentioned your resume, you know, from the past years. But just as a person, you're also interviewing for the job. And I know you a little bit from outside of the district. And you're, you know, we always talk about Keith's integrity. You're gonna fill those shoes just fine, 'cause you are a man of integrity. So somebody wise said that trust and transparency, you have to, you have to be able to back that up, right? If you wanna be trustworthy and transparent, you have to have the stuff to back it up. And I 200% believe that you are the person for this job and I can back it up.
Thank you.
Ditto to all of us. I'm just excited to have you as part of the team and your years of leadership and experience in the district. And I know you'll continue to help us make good financial decisions and good decisions for our students. So just excited to have you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add just quickly that, you know, Jason and I came to Wasatch County School District about the same time. And we showed up at Wasatch High School. I was a young assistant principal and he was a counselor. And we've, our careers have kinda mirrored one another coming up through the system. And we worked for several years at the high school and several years here at the district. And then continued in my time as superintendent. He's been a big support to me. And I know he's been a big support to Keith. He's been a guy that both of us have relied on heavily in our jobs. And when we needed somebody with a keen intellect to look something over and maybe give us some advice, he's been a go-to guy for everyone in this district. And not unlike many of you, but as Tom put it, he is so well-prepared for this job. And we're excited for what he's gonna do. And as the superintendent, it's really important that I have someone that I can work closely with. And as Richard Stoll came up and shared with the board that he thought that Keith and I were a great example of how a superintendent and a business administrator should work together. We were very concerned to find a replacement that we could continue and hopefully people around the state could continue to say that about Wasatch. And I believe we accomplished that. And we're excited to have you, Jason. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, Jason, it's all you. Why don't you share your experience with this process and your feelings about the role moving forward?
Well, I'm genuinely excited to embark on this sort of new stage in my career. You know, for 25 years, Christie and I have lived and worked in this school district. And at this point, I could never even imagine working anywhere else. And I've worked for a long time with all these people back here. And as you kinda remember and think back about, you know, what helps you become who you are, it's those interactions with all of those, all those people, the teachers and the administrators and my mentors as I was kinda coming up through the system, which Cheryl Hardy and Paul Sweat was one of those, for sure. He showed up in my first interview at the old Wasatch High School when I was, when I was looking for my first job. And I've known and loved and worked with Paul Sweat since that time. The magnitude of following someone like Keith is not lost on me, for sure. I know, I mean, he's been here for all those 25 years plus. So I've never known anybody but Keith in this role and have watched him closely for a long time. And I'm so, so glad that he, he's not a real public guy. He probably would've liked to submitted his resignation the week before he left. I just slipped out. But I'm really... I'm really glad that I will get to work closely with him because I've learned a lot in my time, but there's a lot more to learn. And the magnitude of helping you to account for each dollar that we receive and disperse is a big responsibility that we owe to our public and to our students and to our educators. And then lastly, I know, and I've worked with each of you for some years now. And I'm really excited to work more closely with you as you make courageous decisions to lead this district forward into our future. I mean, there's a lot of really important decisions that have been made and yet to be made. And the possibility of doing that is really exciting to me. So thank you very much for your confidence and I pledge to work hard to be good at it.
Alright, let's have photo op. And bring your wife. Let's have a picture with the board. Yeah, why don't you introduce your wife to us all? I know we've met.
She can speak to you. This is Christie.
Christie can speak.
She and I grew up in Snaker High School together. We grew up in the same place. I was a couple of years older than Christie. She's just a hair taller than me. You know, she's, she's like giving away all of her, like, you know, heels shoes and stuff. I really appreciate that. But we dated a little bit in high school, but it was after my mission and we were both freshmen at BYU that things started clicking as she hit right.
There's always two sides of the story, yes. I can see her eyes just turning. Not rolling, but they're turning. There's always two sides.
We'll go with his version.
We'll go tonight, 'cause it's his night.
Yes.
We'll go with his. Anyway, so Jason mentioned, did you, have you worked in the district? Have you, no?
No.
Yes and no.
Just in helping me.
Just, yeah, just like Justin.
Christie's a dietitian. She works a day a week at the hospital and at the health department. Both of them are just kinda part-time.
Oh, that's great. My mom is a dietitian or was a dietitian. Yep. Very good. Well, congratulations to both of you. We're excited. Like Justin Kelly said, Jason is who he is because of you, Christie. So thank you for letting him work with us and be the man that we know he is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's picture. Photo op tonight. Good thing I wore my blues. I brush my teeth. Yeah, if you wanna be in this room.
You two first. Yes, look.
Oh, yeah.
Sort of the passing of the torch. Just Keith and Jason.
I don't take a picture unless I hide behind somebody.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, now everyone in. And Christie too.
And Dickson, right back here, right back.
Alright, you stand next to Christie.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, that clicks right. Okay. Everyone say money. Thank you.
Popping circumstance.
Oh, Jesus. We're rolling. Okay.
Tom got rumors that Tyler goes through the meetings pretty quickly. Let's see, let's see how he does.
Gosh, doing my best. There's a lot of celebration tonight, though, Tyler. Gotta celebrate. Gotta be in the moment.
Yeah, soak it in.
Okay, we are going to begin with a public comment. So there's a couple of public comments tonight, but let's get the regular public comment out of the way. Not that we get it out of the way, but we're gonna be...
Let's put that as a priority.
It's gonna make it a priority. We'll put it up to the first item of business. So if there's any members of the public that are either here or online that would like to make a comment, the time is yours. Okay, we'll close the public comment. Now what we're going to do is we are going to open another public comment specifically around school fees. And we're gonna ask Todd Johnson to come up and just give us a quick overview. Is that what we're doing?
Yep.
Okay. And then anybody that would like to comment after his overview has the chance.
Thank you. So Wes Bingham and I have had the opportunity to work through the secondary schools and meet with the administrators and review the fee schedule for both the middle schools and the high school. And we have some proposed adjustments that we would like to suggest. And just a quick summary on those proposed adjustments. Some of them are removal of some of the fees that are currently on our schedule, and then there are some additions. And the first removal is the $40 device fee at Wasatch High School. Additions, AP tests have gone up $3 from 95 to $98. The prep ACT and prep ACT tests and class would increase from $25 to $40. The yearbook would increase from $45 to $55. Driver's education for the alternative school would increase from $35 to $100, which would then match the same price as online driver's education. Pottery would increase from $20 to $35. And then student travel, cost per activity, would increase from $1,500 to $1,650. For the middle schools, PE clothes would increase from $15 to $20. There's currently a basketball fee for the middle schools, which we are suggesting would be removed. So that's removing that $50 fee. Facts intro to cooking and childcare would increase from $10 to $15. The dance one fee would be removed, but dance two would increase from $5 to $10. And the drama one fee would be removed. And then finally, for the middle schools, film intro, film one and two, desktop publishing, movie making, one and two, would increase by $5 from $10 to $15. So those are the proposed fee changes for the high school and for the middle schools.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we, I don't think we do anything. This is just public comment.
Uh-huh, out for review until the next board meeting.
Okay.
And just for the record, can we just again state, you know, what happens for children who can't meet the...
Fantastic. I'd love to speak about that.
Yeah.
And so certainly both at the state level and then primarily at our district level, it is our intention and initiative to make sure that every student gets every opportunity. So if a student can't meet the fees proposed on this schedule, then they submit a fee waiver. And then the fees are waived. In entirety, every fee, none of them would have to be paid. And then also, it's a priority for our school-level administrators to make sure that anybody who even suggests not being able to pay to participate would be taken care of.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Todd. There's a lot of work that goes into this and the attention to detail. And we appreciate your work on it. You've done a nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Anybody wanna make comment on the fees? Any comments over Zoom? Alright, we'll close the public comment on school fees. I will, moving on to the consent items, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion to approve the consent items.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent items pass. Mary Ann? Mary Ann, she's off.
Say it again.
Alright, great. Action items. We're gonna invite Todd to come back up. Should've just had you stay up there, Todd, to review action item number one.
I'm excited about both of these proposals. The first one is for...
Yeah, one and two. Okay.
The first one is for Elevation Software. And so just a summary of what Elevation does for the students in our district. Elevation is for English language learners. And what the software does is allows us to organize information that promotes these students' learning of English. And so not only does this software organize information, but it reports test scores. It tells us what the students can do and helps us set goals for where students need to go next, including suggesting strategies. Teachers, counselors, and administrators all can view the information on Elevation Software. The proposal then is to purchase Elevation Software for $62,595.46. And the best news is that this is all funded by a state grant used to purchase software for English language learners. And so it's our recommendation that we approve this purchase.
So moved. Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
The next initiative is Imagine Learning. And so, again, this is English language learning software. And, um, it's used across our district, both at the secondary level and at the elementary level. It's primarily used for level-one English language learners. And for those students, it, it primarily enhances vocabulary development. The teachers like it. They feel like the students are making progress using this. And so, the cost for this software is twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. And again, the best news is that this would be funded by the same state grant. So, our recommendation is to improve, uh, is to approve the purchase of Imagine Learning software for the price tag of twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments for Todd? All right.
Keep those state grants coming.
Those state grants. What, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Well, Mary Ann. Thank you, Todd. Again, nice job. All right. We're gonna invite Kirstha Albert, Director of Communications, Executive Director of Communications, to come up. It's not. I thought it was.
Okay. So, we are looking at a revision, as discussed during the study session, to the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar, which is the upcoming school year. It surrounds the professional development days in October, um, that are related to the fall break and in December relevant, or relative to the winter break. If we look at October, the current version that is out has students ending the, um, quarter on October eleventh. And then the twelfth and thirteenth, not on this version, but on the one that's currently published. And then students going out from, I'm sorry, that's the wrong. It's students going out on the thirteenth and then coming back on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth. I apologize. So, the current version that's out, everyone goes out on the thirteenth. That's the end of the quarter. And everyone comes back. Students come back on the twenty-fifth. Teachers come back on the twenty-third. After some, um. Yeah, the one that's published, sorry. There were, um, comments from the community that it felt exceptionally long for parents, especially those who have to arrange for work, um, and for student, or for childcare, that going out for a weekend, getting off on the thirteenth, going out this past one in twenty-twenty-two, getting off on a Friday, having a full weekend, having a full week off, having another weekend, and then an additional two days in a row, Monday, Tuesday, was a, a lot for parents. And after discussing it with directors and, um, who actually, um, you know, facilitate those professional development days with the building administrators, the decision was made to put it out that we would split those dates for twenty-twenty-three around the fall break, so that Friday, the thirteenth, would be professional development with students going out on the, uh, twelfth, as you see. And then just that Monday, students out following fall break, and then everyone back on the twenty-fourth. And then for Christmas, the published version has everyone going out on, I can't even see that. I just got new glasses too. Um, everyone going out on Friday, the twenty-second is on the published version. And then up in January, what we have published currently, and Stacy, if you could just go up there, sorry, um, we would have students coming back on the eighth, and teachers coming back for professional development days on the fourth and fifth. That's the published version, is, is professional development days the fourth and fifth, and students back on the eighth. We've split that. If we go back down to December, it was getting really close to have people act, all, everyone out on the twenty-second and have a full day on the twenty-second. The feelings were that it's, it would be difficult to arrange Christmas travel, so close to the actual holiday. So, as a compromise, the students would go out on the twentieth as the end of the semester, and one professional development day on the twenty-first. And now, teachers and students out on the twenty-second, giving a little more time for that Christmas weekend to commence. And then, teachers coming back on the third, and students coming back the fourth and fifth, and not waiting until the eighth. When they were waiting until the eighth, we actually had them out that whole first week, coming back the eighth through the twelfth, and then going out again on the fifteenth for the holiday. That's a lot. As a parent, that's what my recommendation would be, that that's a bit of a burden for parents who have to handle daycare. Um, and also, you know, when we talk about what is the best calendar academically, my colleagues as directors put this forth as what's gonna make sense. And our recommendation tonight would be that we, um, vote on the revised calendar.
Okay, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school calendar.
Second. Any questions for Kirstha?
I do have one. I know we talked about this at study session. This is Mary Ann Allen from Silver Village. Um, just, Kirstha, as you've been talking about it, I just want to make sure we're following, uh, public knows protocol, because you were talking about the difference between, we already have a posted one, and this is a revision. Are we required to post revisions for thirty days? That's my only question, is if there's a requirement that we're having to meet, or if we can just change it?
Well, I think we discussed in the study session that we didn't need to. And, um, we have our, our counsel, Anderson, here. Jared? All right. Did you catch that, Mary Ann? There's no requirements per, per the, the advice and counsel.
I can hear it heard out on study session, sorry.
Well, no, no worries.
We are still starting the same date as the posted and ending the same date as the posted. And with the required hundred and eighty days, three of the six professional development days are considered instructional days.
Perfect.
So, nothing has changed in term of the composition of instructional days or starting or ending the school year.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Mary Ann, did you vote?
Mary Ann, did you vote?
Yes, I, Mary Ann Allen, aye. Sorry, I forgot Sam and Inka.
Okay. The calendar finally is approved.
Never putting final on that.
Thank, thank you. All right.
Thanks, Kirstha.
All right. Keith? Or would you have Jared? Jared, will you just come up and Keith can help with, uh, action item number four?
As, uh, the members of the board are aware, uh, last year, the district, uh, joined with one thousand four hundred and ninety-four other districts located throughout the country to bring claims against Jewel Labs, Inc., over their, uh, production, marketing, and distribution of vaping-related material. We have, uh, received a proposed offer of settlement. So, the item before the board for approval this evening is the actual settlement agreement. The terms of the settlement agreement are, uh, termed confidential. We have reviewed those. I have, uh, reviewed, uh, the proposed agreement. And I would recommend that, uh, the district accept the settlement as it is presented.
Okay. Motion to approve the Jewel settlement. Is there anything else I need to add to that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Ann Allen, aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, passes. Thank you. We're gonna have you talk through item number five.
So, the next item, uh, on the agenda is a proposed acquisition of, uh, property that generally lies, uh, southeast to the new high school site. Uh, this is approximately five acres that is owned by George Anne McNaughton. And the purchase, uh, price is nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That would include four shares of Spring Creek Ditch irrigation and one share of Sagebrush irrigation to boot. Ms. McNaughton has accepted, uh, the offer. She has actually signed the agreement. So, the item before the board this evening is whether, uh, this shall be executed on behalf of the district to finalize this purchase agreement.
I, uh, motion that we purchase five acres from George Anne McNaughton, uh, adjacent to our, uh, proposed high school site in the amount of nine hundred and thirty dollars. Nine hundred and thirty thousand.
That would be a bargain.
But we'll pay nine hundred and thirty thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Mary Ann Allen, aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Jared. All right, we're out. Thank you for coming, Justin and Tara. All right, so for, um, board report, is there any additional information that the board would like to report on before we turn the time over for Superintendent? His report?
I attended that, uh, cultural night. Is that what they call, or?
The multicultural night.
Multicultural night at the, uh, TMS. And that was a, a really fun evening, actually. A lot of music and dancing and good food and just a lot of community members there and students. So, it was, it was actually a fun, uh, a fun evening to, uh, to spend time there, so.
Lot of, lot of different cultures represented.
Yeah.
I heard like in the dozens.
Yeah, uh, like fifteen, I think, or fifteen or sixteen.
Principal Meekum, thank you for coming. Have a nice evening.
Thanks for going to that, Corey.
Fun evening.
Anything else from, from the board? Okay, Superintendent?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, we did the annual Sterling Scholar, um, regional contest was, uh, last night down at UVU. Um. We had, uh, we had three champions and I believe six runner-ups. Uh, Mr. Johnson was, was down there representing the district. Um, and, uh, so another great showing. We'll have those Sterling Scholars come to a board meeting and do a little celebration with them, if we can kind of line, line that up for next month. Will you help me do that, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Have those, uh, those kids and their advisors here for next month's board meeting? That'd be great. Um, and then, other than that, I, I just have, uh, just a reminder, our, our national convention is coming up, um, March thirty-first to April third. We're excited to take the board and, and, uh, involve, uh, the board in some great professional development with some of your colleagues from around the country. It should be a great experience. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we will, uh, adjourn this meeting and I'll entertain the motion to go into an executive session to discuss personnel.
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay. All right. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody.